Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education. It is 7:03. And if the secretary would please follow the roll and determine if we have a forum.
Joe Abdella, John Bonayudo, Greg,
here.
Stephanie, Angela, Alex, Justin, Jennifer, Jane, Julie's here, Pete, and Mary.
Mine, so that's a forum. Okay. We will move on to item B on the agenda, which is recognition of volunteer extraordinaire.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening is a very special night that we carve out each year to slow down and make sure that we pay special tribute to those folks who give, you know, so willingly themselves to our schools, to our children. So tonight we are awarding a few individuals with our 2023 Volunteer Extraordinaire Awards. I'm going to let each principal or person who's recommended our folks for this honor to introduce them. And if one of them is not present, then I will certainly fill in their duties. So first, I'm going to ask Emily Rue for Booth Free School to share with us her 2023 Volunteer Extraordinaire.
Is with tremendous pleasure to announce that Sierra Gorgleon is Booth Free Schools Volunteer Extraordinaire this year. Sierra's dedication to Booth Free School and her community is one that cannot be matched. Sierra has been PTO president for two years. During this time, she has created and implemented several after-school programs, including the tennis program, garden club, and a real favorite lately is Foods Around the World. Sierra is constantly coming up with new and exciting ideas for the children at Booth Free School. She also spends her time helping other community members with school events and fundraisers. When she's not wearing her school superhero cape, Sierra devotes her time to her beautiful family and volunteers within the community as well as being part of the Roxbury Ambulance Association. We are so pleased to recognize Sierra for all her hard work and dedication to Booth Free School students and staff. Thank you, Sierra. All right. Next, I have for Burnham School, Joy Ruper is this year's Burnham School Volunteer Extraordinaire. Joy's commitment to our school and the Bridgewater community is always apparent. Joy is a tireless advocate for students' needs and a staunch supporter for our faculty and staff. She has participated and shared numerous Burnham School activities. She's been an active member of our PTO. Joy has volunteered also as a class parent. She's helped plan and run many fundraisers and events for our students, as well as being a PTO treasurer for five years, five of the last years. Joy's positive presence in our school and the Bridgewater community is always noticed and appreciated. We are pleased to recognize Joy for her dedication to Burnham School.
At this time, I would welcome Emily Judd from Washington Primary School to the podium to introduce her volunteer extraordinaire.
Good evening, everyone. Washington Primary School would like to recognize Sarah Clemente as a 2023 Volunteer Extraordinaire. Sarah's not able to be with us tonight, but I do want to take this time to share with you some wonderful things that she does for our school. Sarah is the parent of Colin in kindergarten and Eloise in third grade. Over the past few years, Sarah has been an active member of the PTO, leading many events and serving as a class representative. She has been instrumental in researching and organizing thoughtful enrichment programs, such as an improvisation workshop, virtual author visit, a Mexican song and dance experience, and a special concert from the Frederick Gunn Schools Music Department. Sarah was supportive in planning educational learning opportunities for our annual Green Week Schoolwide Study. She worked with community member Marion Heberstock to teach our students about watersheds. Sarah volunteers regularly in the kindergarten classroom to support center work and in our third-grade classroom to support fact fluency through math games. Sarah's dedication to our school, her enthusiasm for learning, and her willingness to do great things for our students makes her an exceptional volunteer at Washington Primary School. So we congratulate and thank her for her service.
At this time, I would welcome Don Shels, Dr. Don Shels, the principal of Chapag Valley School, to share the volunteer extraordinaires for Chapag and also for our AgriScience program as well.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here tonight, and this is a happy occasion. Our first volunteer extraordinaire is a gentleman named Bob Rycroft, affectionately known around the district as Bob the Bus Driver. And that's a picture of me and Bob at a recent game. He's not here tonight because he's at the softball game. In fact, we're lucky we have a quorum here tonight, I think. But I was talking to him at Saturday's softball game, and you know, at this point, the award winners had been notified. I didn't think it was reaching any surprises to say, hey, I'm really looking forward to giving you your reward on Monday night. And he said, oh, Don, if we win this game, there's no way I'll be, I mean, I want to win the award and I'm excited to win the award, but if we win this game, there's no way I'll be there. I'm going to the game. He goes to all our games and he's so interested in supporting our team, which is how he came to my attention. And we're lucky. We have a lot of people like that at Chapag. Maybe we need to start giving more awards. Now, he started here many years ago as a tennis coach, and what he used to do for our kids back in a time when this was still a thing, he wanted to make memories for them, and he used to painstakingly craft scrapbooks, individualized scrapbooks for each of our students with news clippings of what they had done and their exploits on the court and so forth that they kept. And years later, students would reach out to him and say, you know, I have this as a point of memorabilia on my bookshelf. I take it down sometimes and I'm glad I have it. So huge SBS softball fan, as I just said, but the Bob the Bus Driver thing, maybe that's what sticks with me the most because I was chatting with him and I just said, well, what are your experiences as a bus driver? What has that meant to you? And he told me a story. He goes, I just like connecting with the kids. Just last year, there was a three-year-old that got on the bus and said, Bob, today's my birthday. I'm going to be four. And he had a very serious look, the student, and Bob said, why so serious? And the kid said, because I realized I'll never be three again after today. And Bob got the kid laughing anyway about that. And he said to me, and that's what it's all about, getting the kids to laugh and relating to them. But then he paused and said, no, actually, it's about keeping them safe. That's the first thing. But then it's building relationships. So that's an incredible story. He's a great friend of our school, and I'll accept the award on Bob's behalf, Dr. Brazel, and I'll give it to him when I next see him, okay? Angela Leclerc. Now, what an incredible, incredible resource and support for our school. Angela has been and is major, major supporter of music and the dramatic arts in our school. If there is a production going on out there, Angela is doing something to support it. She's feeding the kids. She's selling the tickets. She's printing the programs. She's publicizing the event. She wants to make sure that theater and the arts flourish in our school. And when they flourish here, it has a lot to do with the momentum that she supplies. But then there's her PTO involvement for many, many years, and she still is involved in PTO. I hope that continues. She's our current PTO president and has done amazing work in that regard. I just think that the work she puts in, I mean, all PTO members are dedicated and they all deserve some thanks. Here's a story, okay? I was here, I think, at like 9:30 one night for another event. It was not her event. It had nothing to do with her. And I went towards my office and she comes walking in carrying stacks of boxes. It's not that I wasn't happy to see you, Angela, but I said, what the heck are you doing here? It was like 9:30 on like a Thursday night. Oh, I've got to get ahead on getting these. What were they? What were they, Angela? Shout it out. Yeah, burning the midnight oil, right? All to make sure that our kids are recognized and that our school moves forward. So just thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do, and please come forward and be recognized. Okay, the Chapag AgriScience Academy Center has no greater friend and supporter than Tim Armbruster. Now, Tim works in the industry. And his expertise, it's remarkable, and he shares it. And he knows how to share it. He's not just a technocrat. He also knows how to build relationships with people. And that's how ultimately you transfer and share knowledge. And all that he's learned in his life as a student, his career in the industry, he shares with us. He connects us with local players. He connects us with local institutions. He helps us find opportunities for our students. He gives us technical advice about how our programs could improve. I was at a fundraiser a few weeks ago, a farm-to-table dinner over at Toplands Farm. Very connected, Mr. Armbruster helped make that happen. They raised $10,000 for our kids, all of which will see their way to agri science students and scholarships and support for the program. And he was, and there were many people whom I don't mean to deny. There were many people who made that happen, but Mr. Armbruster is a big contributor. That's an example of how he's helped our program. He sits on the Friends and Alumni of AgriScience Committee. He sits on the Advisory Committee. He's always there, and no matter what you ask him, he does it and gives more, and he never seems to run out of energy. Very, very, very positive force in the lives of our students and our school. We appreciate you, Tim. Please come forward and be recognized. Sometimes I'm afraid I talk too much and I try to get away. And then many people are shaking their head yes, especially my faculty. But I almost forgot one of our most powerful supporters, also connected to Ag and then also to our PTO, and who has had an amazing influence on the way that our school comes to see the role of our PTO and the operations of our PTO, especially connecting the AgriScience Center. You know, the center was new, as we all know, and we were trying to figure things out. We had to figure out how to build not only the center, but its support structures, how to make sure that we were making the right connections. Mr. Armbruster helped with that, too. How to make sure that we knew how to get parents involved and supporting what we were doing. And that was not easy to get that plane off the ground. From the inception of the center, this next winter was there, helping us build it and fly it. And now it's getting up above the clouds, thanks to her efforts. All a kind way. I'll also accept on Paul's behalf and give that award. Thank you.
We now move on to recognition of our Teacher of the Year, Leslie Holzgrube.
And I'd like to invite Dr. Teresa DeBrito to share a few words about our Teacher of the Year recipient, Leslie Holzgrube. And then we'll have a very special memento for her as she leaves us. But hopefully not for too long, but we are excited to recognize her tonight.
Good evening. I prepared a little something to say. Our 2023 Teacher of the Year has been a leader in our district. Beyond the classroom, she has taken on many roles, including as an advisor to several clubs. She approaches all of her responsibilities with a high level of diligence, transparency, and a collegial demeanor. She can select any spot she wants in the parking lot every morning because she is one of the first to arrive. She gives of her time. She volunteers on the District Professional Evaluation and Development and Evaluation Committee. She regularly uses her lunchtime to meet with students. She even goes away across the world to chaperone students in Quebec and most recently in Costa Rica. She is a detail-oriented professional who approaches all her duties with the same level of care and diligence. She perseveres through any challenge and is admired by her colleagues. We have been a better community because of her. She will surely be missed when she retires. Congratulations to Mrs. Leslie Holzgrube.
Well, thank you very much. I don't think I ever aspired to be Teacher of the Year. And I think probably most of my colleagues don't aspire to that either. But what we do hope is that we make a difference, a positive difference in the lives of our students, that when they come to our rooms, our classrooms, our building, that they feel safe and valued and hopefully challenged, and that when they leave, they know a little bit about my discipline. They know a little bit more about the world and hopefully, just hopefully, a little bit more about themselves. So I am grateful for this, but I am equally grateful for the 22 years I have been able to participate in the Region 12 education of the children. Thank you.
And lastly, in our recognition this evening, I would like to recognize our board member Julie Stewart, who is, this will be her last meeting with us. And Julie, you wanted to say a few words before we start this, so please, you have the floor.
So it has been a tradition for outgoing board members to say a few words, so I thought I should continue with that tradition. Six years ago, our region was in trouble. I joined the Board of Ed at a time when declining enrollment loomed heavy and the future of our district was uncertain. However, we figured out a creative, attractive, challenging, and overwhelming solution. Bringing agri science to Region 12 was a battle. We won. We did it. We moved mountains. It is becoming a massive success. Many hardworking people made this happen, but one stands out. My hat is off to volunteer Greg Kava, who led the Building Committee and is now our chair. It took a tremendous amount of dedicated time, strategic thinking, perseverance, and grit to bring our agri science program in under budget and on time. Greg, you are a hero, and I thank you. Enrollment was also a huge and ongoing issue for the future of my hometown school, Burnham. We had barely 30 students, and it was not sustainable. But we figured it out. We pushed for tuition in, we reconfigured grades, and we promoted the outstanding education that we offer. We now have more than double the number of students at the Burnham School. In fact, all our elementary schools are thriving, and boy, does that feel good. Then there was COVID, perhaps the hardest and most unexpected problem we faced. But we figured it out. It turns out that our extra space was a huge plus, and we were able to keep students in school more than almost any other. Our teachers were rock stars, and our leader at the time, Megan Bennett, got us through. An amazing effort and accomplishment. In part, because of all of this, our community support is solid. The days of extreme budget battles and parades of people complaining about overspending during public comment has waned. One of the main reasons? Nicole Grant. I never understood the financials until Nicole came along. She was not, she has not only saved the district lots of money, but has gained the trust of our town leaders and community members. There isn't much that Nicole can't figure out. Thank you, Nicole. To all my partners here, the other 11 board members, somehow, we figured out how to get along. Remember the days when almost every vote was by town lines? Washington with Washington, Bridgewater with Bridgewater, and Roxbury somewhere in between? Those days seem to be gone. We have all managed to put past grudges aside and have dedicated ourselves to support the students, teachers, and administration of Region 12, and we should all be proud of that. To Dr. Goslin Mark, I know you have the talent to keep us moving upward and onward. Oh, the places we will go. Thank you for joining the team. Finally, and most significant, our teachers. Teachers should be the most celebrated people in the world of education. They have the most impact on our communities and our future. Seems Region 12 teachers have figured it out. That is why our students perform so well. And above all, that is why we have students who are respectful, who are known for sportsmanship and leadership, and who give us example after example of great achievements both in and out of the classroom. Bravo to our teachers. It has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Well, Julie, you have been a very, very important member of this board. Your leadership of the committee on on strategic planning has done more than strategic planning. You've given us identity. You've given us a logo. You've given us just about everything anyone could possibly give, and we cannot thank you enough. You took me on a long walk one day and introduced me to this town of Bridgewater, and after that, I'll be eternally grateful. But I will tell you that this is important work, and you have been at the forefront of our making this region into the place that everyone wants to send their kids to school. And we think that's an amazing thing. We couldn't have done it without you. So thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to also thank Julie for her hard work, her dedication, her charisma, positivity, and smile. I think there's been a lot of times where your smile alone has probably picked up the board when things get tough. So thank you for being you and sharing that with us. And we have something that we would like to share with you. But before I get to you, I also want to make sure that I invite you to do coffee again with me sometime in Bridgewater. That was also one of the highlights of my early days here, too. So I'd love to get together again and spend some time together. So without further ado, I'm going to ask you to come and meet us in the front of the room here, so we can present our special gift, special gift, I'm sorry, to you as a token of our gratitude.
Okay, I think at this point, we are going to take a short recess. We have some coffee and cookies and things over here, and we can greet all of our Volunteers Extraordinaire.
Thank you. And all of our teaching staff and principals, you may feel free to leave. I know you have to be up early to work tomorrow, so you know, don't worry. You can certainly head out at this time also.
At this point, we're back in order at 7:40. And at this point, we'll ask if there's any public comment on agenda items. Any member of the public who wishes to comment on agenda items. Now is your time. Hearing none, we will move on. Year-end review, Chapag Valley School. Dr. Shels, Mr. Croft. Mr. Croft's not here.
Mr. Croft certainly would have been here. He sends his regrets. He's, first was at the Aquaterre for a banquet for some of our middle school students representing us, and then he's going to represent us at the softball game. And I appreciate him covering for me here last night. So well, I'm happy to spend a little time with the year-end highlights from Chapag Valley School. And I want to start by discussing two new strategic pivots that we're going to, that we're rolling out. One's called Link Crew, and one's called Student-Centered Teacher Coaching. And then I'm going to go over the points of pride in general for our building, showcasing the achievements of our students and our faculty receiving. So when we talk about our first new strategic pivots, Link Crew and Coaching, Student-Centered Coaching, I just want to stop and note that what we're trying to do is find efficient and affordable solutions to complicated problems. The metaphor you always hear about is you're looking for the small rudder that turns the big ship. And what we're going to see tonight, I think, is that the research shows these two moves, these two pivots, Link Crew and our coaching initiative, are small but powerful rudders that can turn the big ship. And what they're about is, Link Crew is, and this is a blessing. And what they're about is, Link Crew is, and this is a blessing, as we were saying before, as Julie, you said, we now have increased enrollment. We have access to students who want to come here from many different sending towns. And it's great. It's wonderful to see them all converge here. It happens at all points, six to twelve, through tuition in students or students who move to our district. A big point of convergence is the ninth grade year, when so many students enter our Agri-science Academy. And while this is a wonderful blessing, we also are charged with making sure that all these kids have a good transition to high school. Now, a transition to high school is always a quantum leap. Even if it were our own eighth graders just down the hall, moving to a new paradigm requires a lot of support. And the research is clear that we have to spend time supporting kids when they transition into our school and going forward so that they can get to know each other and build a healthy climate in our school. Link Crew is going to be a powerful response to that state of affairs. And the second issue I want to talk about is we're looking for an efficient system to tie teacher learning and professional development to outcomes that we can see in our classrooms with our students, which has always been a tricky problem, despite best intentions in our business. So let's take a little time and talk about these two things together. And I do have, you won't have to listen to a stuffed shared administrative talk the whole time, okay? I do have real live teachers and we had one real live student, but I think it got too late for the student, right? We're going to come up and share what this, these things really look like in lived experience, okay? Okay. So Link Crew, what is Link Crew? It is a transition program that welcomes freshmen and helps them make the leap to high school. It's research-based. It's built on the strong belief that students helping students is one of the most powerful ways for kids to build connections and social capital. And the way it works is a high school transition team and a mentor, who's Mr. Stinson, who's speaking in a minute, trains link leaders from among our eleventh and twelfth graders. Those link leaders work to connect the underclassmen to the school and to each other. Why do this? Well, we already noted that we have so many new students coming into our school who don't know each other. We want to build additional structures to help them become connected. Now, the research is pretty clear that providing students with a positive experience in the first year of high school is a game changer. And in fact, when that's done well, student achievement, student performance, and the way a student feels about the memory of their years in high school are all improved because of the nature of this program. This is a way to provide structure, link kids to kids, peer to peer, and help them navigate some of the problems that you face as a high school student, whether it's cliques or coming from different towns or backgrounds or not being sure how to meet the needs or fit into the new environment. This is kids helping kids navigate those challenges. And like I said before, the need to do this, which is, it's a very, this is done in many high schools for the reasons I outlined. We have extra reason to want to do it here because we're trying to meet the needs of so many new kids through our system. So I'm going to invite Mr. Stinson to come up, who's our link trainer, our link leader, our link mentor, and talk a little bit about what he's done with the program so far and what it will look like, and he'll help you understand that.
All right, good evening. And I'm really glad to be here. As Dr. Shell said, this is a program, I think, is overdue at this point now that we're four years in. One of the things that we've noticed collectively, and I think my colleagues will agree, is that we need to find a way to make sure that every Chappagh High School student feels like they belong here. And you talk to them and they say, oh, I'm here from Newtown, or I'm here for the ag program, I'm here for this. We want them to say, we're here for Chappagh. And that's what really what Link Crew is aimed at, just number-wise in terms of that. Link Crew over the past couple of years has impacted over two million high school students and it is used effectively at over four thousand different high schools. So they've got a pretty good proven track record. So basically, one of the other big reasons why I feel we need it is that it puts all of these core values and guiding beliefs that we tie into everything we do here into some real-life practice and skills in these cases. And so what it is, what I've done, I've gone to some training. And I, we did run a May Day training earlier this year with our link leaders. So we have twenty-four link leaders currently right now, set for next year. They are predominantly juniors and seniors. I snuck a couple sophomores in because I feel that they're closer to some of the transitioning stuff going on right now and maybe have a better, you know, ground eye view of what we want to do. So these, these kids, these link leaders were nominated by faculty. I got almost two hundred nominations, which I think is a pretty cool number when you think about what our student body is, from faculty of different kids. And we whittled that down to about twenty-four, twenty-five kids. They will be coming in for two days over the summer for training, then they will also help me run the new freshman orientation program. And one of the things that I think is really cool about the link leaders is when you look at them, they are representative of the Chappagh student body. So I have kids who are in the ag program, I have kids who are in drama, I have kids who play on sports teams, I have kids who do none of those things. I have like a well-rounded mix of everybody. Their job basically is to kind of be like a big brother or big sister to incoming freshmen. One of the last activities we did on their training day was generate a list of what they think every ninth grader should know. And it included what kind of pencils to bring, backpacks, water bottles, all sorts of things like that. But it also talked about the benefits of getting involved, of putting yourselves out there, of being a part of a community. So we'll start with the freshman orientation in August. The plan is then, at that orientation, the freshman class will be broken up into groups of about ten and they'll be paired up with two different link leaders and they'll stay with that link group all year long. And we'll do different activities and most of the activities are aimed to be fun during the first year. So we're going to get them to go to basketball games together. We're going to get them to go to the plays. We're going to get them to set up study groups at exam time to start preparing for different ones. And then when we're done with that, the hope is that in years to follow, we'll start to branch out even more into the social and emotional wellbeing component to help the students. So at the end of the day, Link Crew gives students and faculties the opportunity to strengthen our community. It pushes all of us to rise above the status quo and to give us all the opportunity to be educational. That's the plan for Link Crew right now. I'm really excited. The kids who we had at training are really excited. So if you can come down that day in August and poke your head in during freshman orientation, I think you'll have some fun too. So hopefully we'll see y'all there.
Okay, exciting stuff. And just to crystallize it, so here's the roadmap to it. Because I know this all is very confusing. It comes at you fast. The roadmap is we find a faculty member who will be our Link Crew mentor, that's Mr. Stinson. We send him for training to the Link Crew Center. It's very, this is all proprietary. You have to go to their training to get their stamp. That's been done. Then after he gets that training, the faculty mentor identifies with the help of the faculty, students who have the right dispositions to be link leaders. And the beauty of this is there are all different kinds of kids who are on this team. And that's the power of it. Not just from any one group that you might remember from the cliquey days of high school, not just athletes, not just ag kids, all kinds of kids, right? And they are then trained by the faculty mentor to help make connections and help for kids, among kids, between kids, build social capital. And what that looks like is they run orientations. Again, better than having an administrator talk to you for an hour, right? They run the orientations for the freshmen. They push into freshman advisories and build relationships with those students. They schedule special social events for those students and run them, all with an eye towards bringing people together and helping us overcome differences, bridge gaps. And I'm excited that this has been supported here in our school and that we have a great faculty member on board and that we've got some great kids who are going to be involved with it. So I'm going to go on to the next thing, but Mr. Kava, what's your pleasure? Do you want me to stop and ask for questions at this point or wait till the end? I'm happy to, you can, anybody interrupt me at any time. I'm happy to take questions now if there are any. Okay, and you can raise your hand at any time. The next pivot we want to make regards the way we conceive of professional development, which was already, I found, very strongly and well-done here in the region. Central Office, Superintendent, this one and the prior two, Dr. DeBrito, all very, very forward-thinking, great vision about how to support what we're doing with professional development. We spent a lot of time, very well-spent time, the past two years, working with some consultants from the Institute for Learning in order to build better student discourse in our classroom, which is a very important goal, very important instructional move. Now, to build on that, the way I see the issue confronting us is how are we going to make a clear connection, clear trail of breadcrumbs between how we support our teachers and what they learn about their craft? And especially not just their content, so many of them are content masters already, not just their content, but expertise in how students learn. How are we going to build a clear connection between the way we support teachers in that professional learning and what we see happening in our classrooms and the results we see in student learning? That's the question that animates the next segment and that leads us to the pivot I'm going to suggest. We want to leverage the in-house talent we have and a lot of it is sitting over there, and I'll invite them up in a minute, to help student growth in our school. So what we did this year as a leadership team is we participated in a book study called Student-Centered Coaching, The Moves. It's a well-known book in the industry written by a fairly well-respected expert. And the point of her book, I don't propose to give a lecture on the book, thankfully, for you. The point of the book is, how can we figure out to keep the emphasis on the right syllable? How can we be sure we're always talking about student outcomes? So every time teachers are talking about their own professional growth, how can we be sure it connects to a student need? And then it will inform and help with the student growth area. And student-centered coaching is sort of the answer to that. What happens is teachers form relationships with other teachers in an embedded way. It's organic. It happens, we don't need to wait for our PD dates for this work to happen. They're very important, the PD days, right? We have three or four of them, but the problem is they can become siloed and they don't necessarily lead to the kind of result that I'm craving, which is constant attention to how what we're learning is playing out in classrooms. So teachers build relationships with each other, led by our instructional leaders and our content coaches. And they coach each other on how to address a student need and get better at teaching the student to grow in that need area. I better cash that in, again, with a concrete roadmap because it can get very abstract. So here's what it would look like when it's up and running, okay? Our instructional leader or content coach would work with a teacher and say, what growth areas do you notice in your students? So right away, you see the teacher's empowered. This isn't done to the teacher, nothing is forced on the teacher. The teacher's asked for his or her opinion. You're the expert in your own kids. They've been in front of you for a while now. What's the problem? What's the growth area? Oh, they have trouble supporting claims in an essay with evidence. Or they have trouble dealing with the periodic table. I'm noticing a need or a growth area. Okay. The teacher gets to select the goal that he or she wants to learn about and grow on. And then the coach works with that teacher to write goals rooted in standards that will help students grow, help them grow as learners. And then the coach curates research-based methods that can be used, tested, tried out in the classroom to try to improve student learning. The coach and the teacher then volunteer to demonstrate this method that's curated so that other teachers can watch. And something called a lab site, that you'll hear more about from the experts in a minute. And during that lab site, teachers get in a non-judgmental way, a non-critical way, to sit and watch each other, try these new methods, and then discuss how they might use them going forward. The hallmarks of student-centered coaching are that it focuses on the student. It allows teachers to learn from each other. It empowers our in-house experts to build good relationships with peers. It makes professional development more organic. It sets student goals based on important standards. And by the way, all the research is clear that when teachers set goals that are rooted in student needs and then get students to buy into those goals, achievement improves. And it helps teachers change how they teach when a given method isn't working. Because part of the cycle is checking out whether what we tried worked and if not, we try something else. All right, you've had enough of me. I'd like to invite some of our team who's piloting this. We have our Core Four here from the core content areas, just to give a short description of their experience and how they plan to grow this in our school next year. Come on up. Bar, Mr. Pierce, Mr. Dennis, and Mr. Hermanz. You probably know them all. They're very famous.
Okay, good evening. I think that Mr. Dennis and I will go first because we're humanities. So we have something prepared, but we're going to split it up sort of how we thought about this in the middle school and the high school because we're beginning this process. And so we sort of split it along those lines, but that's not to say that that does not encompass a vertical alignment of the standard. So in the humanities department, we've started by, in our preparatory preparation periods and our professional learning communities, our PLCs, looking at teacher formative data and then also some other harder data like standardized testing. And one of the student areas for growth that we identified is reading comprehension, particularly in close reading of nonfiction and fictional texts and also increasing the endurance and capacity for reading of complex texts. So after that, we moved into a series of research-based ideas around metacognition and goal-setting for social-emotional learning. The idea being that if students have a a connection to what they're doing throughout the day, throughout the unit, or throughout the week, or throughout the year, and then they're asked to reflect on those goals, then they are more likely to achieve those goals here, reading comprehension, close reading, and increasing their endurance. So in the middle school, we've really centered around the learning habits that we have identified for students. And those include responsibility, perseverance, self-awareness, and engagement. So students oftentimes will, for example, and we went to one teacher's class, Dr. Brad Taylor's class, he has students writing a learner habit goal each class period. And so they write a goal about, sometimes he prescribes it. He says, I would like you to write a goal about self-awareness today. Or they choose and they're going to write a goal about self-awareness or engagement or perseverance, et cetera. He conferences with them at the beginning of the period and then meets with them at the end to see if that goal is met. We then took what we watched in Dr. Taylor's class, we brought it back to our PLC, and we discussed ways in which it can be implemented in all classrooms, all the way up to the twelfth grade. So it's in this kind of experience where we're going to continue to look at the data that we have from student work, formative work, sometimes interim work, and the research-based methods around metacognition and social-emotional learning and goal-setting that help to connect students with their own goals about reading and then asking them to reflect on if they've met those or not. So in the middle school level, we're sort of working on the learner habits. And then I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Dennis to talk a little bit about the high school.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. As if I needed another reminder of how lucky I am to teach in this district. I was hired here seventeen years ago. I tell everyone that will listen how lucky I am to be here and tonight is another reminder of that. But thanks for having us. Thanks for listening to us. And we appreciate all of the support for sure. You know, we often tell kids our primary objective is to teach them how to think, not what to think, and to think about their own thinking. And if we can prepare kids to do those things, everything else takes care of itself. We believe in the power of our learner outcomes, which is, you know, proudly and loudly and largely presented here and in every classroom. And we often tell our kids, you know, everything we do in class should be connected to that. And if you don't see the connection, you should ask, you should ask nicely, but you should ask. We should be able to defend what we do and why we do it. And, you know, thinking and thinking about your thinking are the two most important things that we do, not only in the humanities, but throughout. So that is the overarching goal behind it all. You know, speaking of seventeen years ago, I was hired here and we had a team teaching model. And I had an incredible opportunity to teach with Chris Gru. I was twenty-three. I didn't really know a whole lot in terms of real I was 23. I didn't really know a whole lot in terms of real-life experience. And I often tell people, in one year, I learned what it probably would have taken me 10 years to figure out on my own. And so this goal of having teachers coach each other and talk honestly with each other about their goals and what we're trying to accomplish, it's important to all of us. We all know it's important, but I'm often reminded of its significance through my own experience 17 years ago when we had team teaching in humanities. So what does this look like in the high school? We often, everything we do is tied to our learner outcomes. We have students create goals, writing goals, social-emotional learning goals. And that's appropriate, which is pretty much always. We've been reminded of that in the last few years. And we often ask kids to reflect on those goals. So that happens in a lot of different ways. They might write about it. They might have conversations with us in the classroom. And students are continually doing that. We also teach endurance. And so what does this look like in the high school? An example is, you know, in the ninth grade, probably throughout, maybe even for adults, we need to be taught endurance and grit, and we've identified that as an area of growth. So a couple of things that we did is, we created a reading schedule. And while this might seem like a pass massacre, tax, ask, master objective, finding the appropriate level of rigor, encouraging kids and really bringing them up to say, "This is what you're gonna work on at home." It was a much more challenging experience. But teaching them how to read and holding them accountable was something that we identified as a goal, especially for our ninth graders, to let them know what high school looks like. So that happened through collaboration, working with each other. Another goal, we think it's really important, is to help kids become better listeners. And we often joke with kids that, you know, the adults aren't very good listeners, not us, of course, but in society in general. And our job is to do better. And so we have read from an expert, Rebecca Shaffir, who talks about what it means to be a good listener and gives strategies for that. So that's a metacognitive experience, is to, you know, degrade yourself or think about yourself as a listener based on the ideas of this experience and giving opportunities throughout the year for to formally reflect on that in discussions. And certainly then, we come back as a team to discuss how it went and what we can do better. Next year, we hope, we will, not hope, we will observe each other. And we started that process this year, but we'll formalize it more next year and work with each other. And I hope it looks like somewhat like the days it used to, 17 years ago, when I was first here, where we genuinely learned from each other. So that's what it looks like in humanities. Thank you for your time. I'll turn it over to...
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Mary Ann Marr. For those who don't know me, I'm head of the math department. So I'm really happy that humanities went first, and you talked about the reading strategies, Taylor, because one of the things that we find in math is that math really challenges students in more than one way. It's not just the mathematical process and conceptual learning, it's also that they understand what they're being asked. So one of the things when we do the data disaggregation in math, which we do during our PLCs, but we also individually do them after assessments, whether they're formative assessments or summatives, is to really try to understand where our students' misconceptions coming from. And oftentimes, it can come from the fact that they don't understand the question being asked. So the reading comprehension skills are extremely important. And in some of the strategies that we're coming up with to help the students, we're looking to work with our colleagues in other disciplines to help us, whether it's in physics, whether it's in English, whether it's going down in the vertical alignment. So math, as you might imagine, I always tell students, it's like a ghost that follows you around. We wanna make it Casper. Because the things that they may have hated in fourth grade, such as fractions, show up again in ninth grade, in algebra, in geometry, when they're designing things, in Algebra II, in calculus, places where these fractions keep coming back is an example, and knowing when to apply those, and also knowing how to manipulate those things. And we look at the learner outcomes, people say to us, "Well, solving problems is the obvious natural math process" that we're trying to work on. But students engaging in that creative process, if you look at that, curiosity, making connections, reflecting, and finding their answers, is extremely important, also defending their conclusions and judgments. So one of the strategies that we have looked to identify, or to implement, I should say, for students is they have to explain their thinking. The whole metacognition, you're hearing that as a common theme, is explaining their thinking. Because oftentimes in math, some people will say to me, "Well, just getting the right answer is the most important thing." And it's absolutely not. It's really the process they go about and making sure they understand. I've graded tests where I ask explained question, and I'll say, "I really thought they understood it and they got the right answer, but their explanation really showed that there were kind of gaps in their learning." So really trying to get the whole department to be asking students to explain their thinking and questioning is very important. Now, I will tell you just some positive feedback. I had two students come back. One student goes to UConn and the other one goes to Harvard. And these students came back and said, "Mrs. Marr, I have to tell you, one wrote me a letter and one person came to see me." In pre-calculus trigonometry honors, when you asked us to explain, we may or may not have told us. But our college professors were asking us to do it. And where our classmates are taken back a little bit that they have to write in math, we're very used to it. And that is a way for us to make sure, and that whole idea of questioning and explaining is one of the strategies we're using and working with IFL to kind of fine-tune and make that better. So what do our PLCs look like? We get together, and as mathematicians, we love to look at data. We have to be careful about paralysis by analysis and get through that data and say, "What are the important things to look at?" And then we try to identify students where they are and deliver instruction that is needs-based and differentiated. We brainstormed on instructional strategies that would be beneficial to deliver the lessons after we reviewed samples of student work and looked and said, you know, "What are things that we observe and what are things that we wonder?" We incorporated feedback that we had from walkthroughs, from IFL consultants and administrative team, and I participated in those as well, keeping in mind, and to quote Dr. Schells, "You don't have to be bad to get better." To say to teachers, "We always can improve," right? Everybody is, as lifelong learners, we always can have improvement. Our plan next year is to implement more of the vertical team lab sites where teachers will get together. I'll be part of the team to design, deliver, and debrief a lesson that was devised based on student needs identified through data analysis. The benefits of that is, doing the vertical alignment is that teachers who teach the prerequisite course, the current focus course and follow-on course, can provide key information on how students are taught material and where common misconceptions stem from. This analysis, as you've heard before, is non-evaluative and focuses on effective teaching practices and student outcomes. Our planning will include answers to questions such as the following. What is our learning target for the lesson? That has to be very clear. And we need to communicate that to students very clearly, so they understand what is it that we're trying to teach them and transpire to them. How do we think the students will demonstrate their learning, in writing or verbally? How will the new content be delivered and by who? So we'll see. Do we wanna do a combination of teachers on the team? How will we formally assess students? And what are we gonna do with that assessment data? What resources, materials, and technology will we need to get ready? And how will we work together to manage student behavior? We value and appreciate the time that we've been given to work together on this and hopefully we'll continue to get to do this important work. So that's kind of what we're planning, that is what we're planning to do and what we have been doing in the math department. And we feel it's very important, again, for us to be working together in this vertical alignment to help our students grow and see them go from year to year. And again, we look at data, as Taylor mentioned, both data on assessment that we give them, as well as standardized test data. Any questions? You want to hear more about? Yes. All right, I'm gonna try not to cough. I like the metacognition applied to something really interesting, like we're hearing of being referred to more of like a social and emotional kind of component, especially down in the elementary school. But you started to speak to this, and I'm wondering, like, what you're observing in the classroom over time? Like, is it becoming more of, is it tied to student achievement? Coming in at the beginning of the humanities class and writing down, you know, self-awareness between the goals? Like, what, how is that tying in towards the end? If you know, what are you seeing in the classroom that might be changing, or how is that improving? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh. All right. So one of the things about math, again, is retention is extremely important. And we're finding sometimes, and, you know, a lot of kids have electronic devices now, it's a help and a hindrance, because they don't always have to remember things, because they look everything up, right? So I keep telling them, you know, they have to use this. So when they're thinking about their thinking and writing down this explanation of, "How did you get that answer? Explain your thinking on it." We're looking more to see in math, if they have this sense, a number sense, if they have a sense of a concept, and not just a mechanic. So an answer that we don't want to hear as well, you take the like terms, you add them together, you do this, you do that. We want to hear them say, for example, one of the examples a teacher has is they're doing scientific notation and operations with them. How do you know your answer is right? I want them to talk about magnitude of numbers, to say, "Well, this makes sense. If I'm dividing million by thousand, I should get a number like this." That they're using this number sense and not just memorizing, "These are the steps, like by this, by this, and this by this, and I get this answer, so I know I'm right." One of the students recently wrote on this, "How do you know that you're right? Does your answer make sense?" We were doing a correlation between hand and foot size. The student said, "I know my answer makes sense, because I put the numbers into the equation. I got this answer and I know it's right." That's, so I have to go back to students and say, "That's not what I'm looking for." The answer happened to be negative, and it was if my hand, if my foot size is zero, my hand size is negative seventeen centimeters. And why am I that student to say, "This doesn't make sense," right? The whole purpose of math is modeling real-world situations and solving them. And sometimes in those models, some of those values may not make sense because we're doing the best model that make, model a scatter plot of data. But we want them to think about it, to say, "Well, this may not make sense, but the model overall is fairly accurate on the data that I've given," right? And to look and say, "Is this a correlation? Is this strong? Are these variables strongly related?", that sort of thing. So it looks like, the more that they start talking about their thinking and explaining, "Does this make sense? Is this logical?" That gets us outside of just doing mathematical operations. And that really shows if they have an indefinite percent. And that goes from sixth grade to eighth grade. And have you seen that growth along the students? Like, you're starting to see that come to fruition towards the end of the school year? They get better at it. So the other algebra one teacher and myself put that in as a goal. And this year is one of our teaching goals, because one of the positions we're in as teachers of freshmen that are coming into the school is 50% of our students are not coming from Chappaq, right? They're coming from a lot of different places. So, you know, we have to get all of these students ready to go into a level playing field as they're entering into the next grade. And one of the things that we have noticed is students to get better. And that does help with their overall comprehension of math. And math is so much bigger than just comprehension, right? It's so much bigger. And, you know, and I tell them, "When you write the explanation," I'm like, "I'm not your AP English teacher. I don't want a thesis, but I want you to try to give a simple explanation." As that gets better, you'll notice that they're understanding the conceptual world better. Now, this isn't gonna happen overnight, or this takes time. And these devices can be our envy, right? Because if they can go look these up. But I do feel we have been subject to this. Did that answer the question of what it looks like? Does anybody else want to add to it?
I just wanted to speak to that in terms of the reading and writing aspect. So for, you know, if you're asking if you're seeing students move, one of the things that we saw as a student need was students building endurance and capacity for continuing through complex texts. And that also means writing about them with evidence based from the text. So for example, I'll have a conference with a student again and again about certain things in their writing. May it be grammatical, like comma slices, or may it be that their thesis statement does not actually present something arguable. Or maybe it is that they don't fully explain their evidence or don't elucidate how their evidence ties to their thesis. So after that conferencing, students then have this sort of basket of things which they can improve upon. And when we say that we ask them to write a goal, right, if it's self-awareness, then, you know, that may be about the way that they're working during that period towards one of those focus correction areas. So the way that we want to augment this program into next year is to sort of look vertically at, well, what should students be doing in each grade level, whether it be grammatically, or whether it be in terms of writing structure, or whether it be lexiol level, and then have students identify their own particular areas of need and stop and reflect on them so that they can think about how, "Am I continuing to make the same mistake again and again? Am I having a comma slice again and again and again?" So I think to your question about, you know, have we seen them improving? I think that that's the only, that's the only way that we can go. Because while this has sort of started for us later in the year, it certainly has gained traction in that students are ready to write a goal at the beginning of their class period or their unit. And then they are just as ready to take the time to stop, to reflect, and that often breeds the depth that we want in their learning. So it's sort of echo the conceptual talk that Mary Ann is talking about. But maybe it's not so conceptual in English and more about the things that they need to work on to improve their, and evolve their writing and their reading.
One final thing I'm gonna tell you is, I had students one year, talking about Chris Shrew was something that reminded me. The students had a model math problem, finding their variables, come up with equations and do that. And I invited Chris, who's an English teacher, to come in. And she had to go around the room and with the students stepping back, tell the students what problem they were solving, by the way they represented it, knowing nothing about it. And I won't have math teachers come in, because math teachers sometimes might see something that actually isn't there, right? Because we know what's supposed to be there. And it really helped them reflect on, are they modeling this so accurately that somebody walking in that knew nothing about the problem can actually look at it and figure out what message they're trying to convey? And also in a spirit, my corporate background of saying, if we were writing an article, we would want to represent things in different ways to appeal to different people, and we would do that collaboratively. And they go around and they kind of also assess each other's work. So it's their own reflection, but also giving the peers a lot of input. I'll turn it over to Mr. Herman.
I'm Preso Hermans and the science instruction leader. And I really wanna thank Don for having set up, I think, these two very linked initiatives of the student-centered coaching and also the lab site, physically mentioned. And we've had a chance to try both of those, even in science this year. We've used PLC time to really examine formative assessment and how we use it and used a variety of pieces of data, and we've all talked about different ways that we've used it in our classroom. And that's kind of been a basis, springboard for what we've been doing in this coaching area. I did a coaching cycle with Mike Croft, because I wanted to try it out myself and see what's the experience like. And so we focused on differentiation in physics nine, and how we could use formative assessment to set up different groupings for students by need and to sort of really, really try that out and see in practice in this class with this curriculum, how does that work? And bringing that experience into our PLC led to a whole discussion within the department about how we do differentiation and maybe a way that we can really tie the idea of the flexible groupings and then for students to work in groups where they might have some specific needs that can be addressed. Then to tie it down to say, "Have they really learned in this lesson today? Have they learned what we've asked them to do?" And so how can we tie that around to make something like an exit ticket really be maximally effective? And so we came up with a way of doing that, that we thought, "Hey, this might work better." And so I piloted that as a lab site where I invited the teachers in the department in to observe and just to keep track of what they were seeing and to write down what they were seeing, or to think about what they were seeing. And then afterwards in PLC, we debriefed. And I have to say, I wanted to try this out, because I wanted to see what's the experience like. Before I say to the members of my department, "Come do this," I wanted to say, "This is what it's gonna be like." And it was a great experience. It was a really positive, just, you know, a nice experience for me, which is not something you might hear most teachers say about what it's like to be observed. It just felt really great, because the things that they were seeing, they were echoing back what I had been, what we've been working on, what they saw. And we all really learned something that was great. And I think we have a springboard for this, for something that we can do all next year in a way where, you know, we can all go and watch what we're doing and what we're trying. And it might work and it might not work, but we get together in a completely non-judgmental way to talk about, you know, what we saw and what the student need was, how did this match the student need? And really sort of debrief that together. So, I mean, really, it was a great PD experience. I think one of the most effective that I've had. So, I mean, really, I, it was, it was a great PD experience. I think one of the, one of the um, most effective that I've had. And um, and that, that really sort of just, and I want to again, thank Don for having set this up because I think it's sending us in a great direction. Thank you.
Freezo, and uh, you heard a lot of detailed um, reflection there. And it gets into the complexities of each discipline, which is good and proper at a high school. But if you boil it down to quintessence, what all those narratives share is started with a student need. Some growth area or weakness that we saw, the teachers saw in their students. They then talk to coaches about it. The coach collabora- collaborated with the teacher on how they could find methods that might address that student need. And then they tested those methods out by watching each other teach them. Where they're planning to do that, some of them have actually done it already, or it's in the planning stage. And then they reflect on what they saw and how it might impact student learning. And what we get from the ground up, if we do it right, is a structure that I have a strong belief will lead to, will move the needle in terms of teaching and learning in our school. And we'll be done with teacher input and um, teachers will know that what they observe is valued in the process. Um, and that's why I have a belief in this is our, as a, as the PD sort of of the future for us. I've got um, five really strong teacher leaders here tonight, who is the busiest time of the year for them. Uh, they should be grading and planning and they know that's probably what they're going to go do after this, but they came to talk about teaching and learning and I appreciate. But so now I have the joy of trying to go over the highlights of the year for this, for our school. And if I went over everything that Chapag students and teacher, teachers have done, you'd be here till the cows come home and we have cows. Um, so I hope I don't miss anything big. If so, they know how to, where to find me. They know how to come in and give me lumps when I've earned them, believe me, which is a good thing. Alright, so in the performing arts, you might recall, our high school choir performed at Radio City Music Hall at Christmas time with a spectacular with the Rockettes. Uh, and if you could advance the slides, Ben, there's a, a picture of our kids um, at Rockefeller Center um, shortly before their performance. And that was a wonderful experience. And you know, music is a performing art and now that we're out of COVID, I look forward to our students having more opportunities to perform with the audiences they so richly deserve. Keep going, okay? Okay. Now, in the fine arts, um, we had a lot of students who had artifacts that were selected for awards or recognized around the state. Um, first of the Scholastic Art Awards, and these are some of the actual photographs that our students took. There was a Silver Key winner by Isabel Easley. An honorable mention for Annabelle Churik. I hope you can see the screen, it's a little hazy. Anybody who wants me to share this PowerPoint, I can and you can look at them up close. Next slide, Ben. Um, these are more photographs that won awards in this category. Griffin Blum's Splash of Color, Annabelle Churic's Ocean Thrill, Maggie Pooter's Sparkling Spikes, and Maggie Pooter in the show ring. You might guess, she's an agri-science student. But that's a good example of interdisciplinary cross pollination, right? Okay. The Washington Art Association has a Young at Art exhibition. Uh, these are paintings Connor Carew in grade six, Victoria Gustafson in grade seven, and Lyric Colantine in grade eight, all have their work recognized by this organization. And if you look at those pieces, they're far beyond what I could have done. And maybe that's not saying much. They're far beyond what even talented artists could have done. There was a fifth district congressional art show. Juliana Fontanilla Senior entered this piece and it was, it received great recognition. Okay. Claire Kirst in grade eleven, Nurse Herpiece and Kip Faison, grade eleven. Those two pieces were honored by the fifth congressional district contest. That takes us to social studies. They had a big year too. Uh, as they always do, Mr. Dennis took his team to the Model UN Conference at Harvard. I don't know why they don't go to Columbia. I don't ask questions. I know we're probably going to get pressured to go to Penn, whatever. Um, twenty-six students attended the Harvard Conference this year, which is a very prestigious conference, all joking aside, for four days. Um, and they were members of the club that had met for a very long time to discuss um, what was going on and how the UN can work to make the world a better place, which should animate all that we do with kids, right? And I know a lot of students were recognized, right, Mr. Dennis, at that event for what they did? Okay. We had, and I saw this, a World War Two veteran, like as a guest speaker, come in and speak to our AP Euro students. And they asked the most thoughtful questions and that you could tell they were, they appreciated, they had access to an eyewitness to history. And they were learning from this person. Um, and it was a wonderful thing to watch. Uh, again, we had the formal debates in the tenth grade tied to the important learner outcomes. They were great. Um, and we continued to consult with and connect with um, the UN Association President, Mr. Baxter, who supports our program and is a very important liaison for us to grow this, the Model UN going forward. We had culture fairs in the middle school to embrace and understand diversity. And a successful field trip recently for the ninth graders to the Yale Art Museum that I was lucky enough to attend and where the students were asked to um, review and analyze the art and connect it to their curriculum. Okay, here's a picture from, I think, the Harvard UN Conference. That's the new memorial up there, right, Mr. Dennis? Can you educate us on that? Uh, it's good enough. Alright, and Ben, go on. And I think here's the uh, the Model UN team. I guess where is that Harvard Yard or is that the State House or on the Fenway Hall? Okay. Yeah, is that your whole team? Alright, so that was a great, great. Social Studies had another great year. And on we go, Ben. We get to English Language Arts now. There was a whole school summer read at the beginning of the year. Students from all grades met to talk to an author about the house in the Cerulean Sea. TJ Klune came and spoke to our students really about the writer's craft. And about where he drew inspiration for what he writes and how they could write. And um, he gave two presentations, one more tailored to the middle school, one to the high school. And our kids, a great many of them connected with him and met with him afterwards and had lunch with him and felt what it was like to connect with a real author and talk about um, the author's craft. Sophomores again had a humanities fair where, uh, which is like a science fair, except in this case, they had to connect three pieces of art to a plane of a choice. We had a Holocaust survivor, as we have been lucky enough to have the past couple of years. And more power to him. I hope he keeps coming. And I hope for his continued longevity. This fellow ran some kind of triathlon in his mid-seventies, so I think he's made of hearty stock. Um, Mr. Sarkany, and he came in after our students um, read books in literature circles about the Holocaust. And then they also took a field trip to see life as beautiful. So there was a strong connection to this speaker and with our kids. You know, as was the case, many of you were at the court um, visit and the World War Two speaker, this Holocaust survivor, our kids know when they're in the presence of something profound. And they engage accordingly. You know, very often as a teacher or an administrator, you might have to say to kids, well, just being kids, put the cellphone away or focus. And that wasn't the case with any of these events. And all year, freshmen practiced their public speaking skills by giving the morning announcements and providing a short aphorism or quotation for the day that connects to their curriculum. Which if you're a ninth grader and you have to get up and speak on that intercom, believe me, it can be daunting, but they do it. And they overcome it. It increases their confidence and their self-esteem and their belief and their ability to advocate and um, speak publicly, and that's a great thing. Okay. Teachers are also, like the math department, still engaged in accountable talk studies with the IFL from U Pittsburgh, which again, is a way to, for us to study how we can build instructional models that enhance student conversation deeper. Cognitively engage student discourse in our classrooms. Um, there was a global read aloud in the middle school where students read the book Thirst and then followed up with lunch at a, a Tandori restaurant. We had Judge Deepenteneve, I'm, and you know, am I saying that name proper? Deepentima, thank God I have two lawyers here. Uh, who came in to read Ruby Bridges' book, This Is Your Time. And then you all know about the appellate court session in April, where we had the entire softball, sophomore class and many others who wanted to come uh, soak in this appellate court process. Okay. Now, agri-science, you got a nice presentation from Mr. Kermens earlier in the year. So I didn't want to hit you with too much redundancy. And I asked him, can you give me the five highlights that would bring us forward from the last time you spoke to the board? And what he wanted you to know was that we had here the first in-person Chapag FFA banquet uh, a few weeks ago in the auditorium. Started in the cafeteria, ended up in the auditorium. To celebrate the achievements of our students, we had over two hundred people there. We had a great meal and many awards were given out. It was, it was a great night. The FFA chapter has been revitalized. There have been more FFA activities than ever. More um, uh, uh, career leadership development events. Those are competitive events. More team level competitions at the state level. Uh, more involvement in the heart of FFA and what it stands for, which is connecting kids to agricultural science education. We've had a lot of interest in our program and a lot of good publicity, and we were featured twice in some local news publications about how our program is up and coming and the place that people want to be. We've expanded the amount of animals in our barn. And there have been significant equipment upgrades made since we last spoke to you, including, well, you know about the buses, I think, but um, uh, new welding equipment, new greenhouse equipment, and a sawmill coming for twenty twenty-four. Okay. In mathematics, our Math Honor Society provided peer tutoring again for the school, which is a great service, including in Spanish language for some students who needed it. They worked with the Agri-science Department to develop interdisciplinary lessons with the IFL consultants as, as did the English teachers to uh, implement accountable talk strategies. And, and I want to highlight this, the math department this year, under Mary Ann's leadership and Dr. DeBrito's support, um, are introducing a new diagnostic tool for our students called the Horizon Suite Test. They're very cost efficient. They're, they don't take a long time and they give you a much stronger prediction of how students will do on the PSAT and the SAT than some other instruments we might use. And that gives teachers the tools they need to progress monitor. Students in eighth, ninth, and tenth grade to figure out what areas they need to work on to get them ready for the real test. And none of us thinks that a student should be measured just by a standardized test. None of us thinks that that's subtle enough to measure every nuance of a human being. But we know those scores are still important to our community and our students. They're one of the things we look at. And for us, for our teachers to have the right tools to know where students stand relative to those measures and teach them how to do better when they get to the real event is a very good thing. So I want to thank math and English for leading that. Okay. That takes us to athletics. Well, athletics, the reports shouldn't all be about the scoreboard. Shouldn't all be about wins and losses. We do tend to highlight the teams that went further into the season or went further towards championships. The start of my time here, I wrote a letter to every coach, an email saying, just simply thank you for helping our kids grow up. And those of you here who coach kids uh, in sports or otherwise, I think you know, it's one of the best ways we know to help kids grow up. And I think that all the students who participate in our sports programs here, they're getting that out of it. And that's the most important thing to me. But I think it's also nice. They're all competitive. These, these kids are competitive and they want to win. And when they do, we recognize it. So the golf team, they were the Berkshire League champs. Softball, Berkshire League champs, and they're still going. Boys tennis, Berkshire League champs. Mark?
I regret to inform everyone that we lost two to nothing. Great season though. I know. There's a lot to work on, a lot to build on for next year. Works.
Devastated me and I'm in the middle of my presentation.
I know, I'm so sorry.
But I'll, let me double down on what I said. It's not all about that. It's about the grit they have and how far they went. And you watch those games and what they're doing and how they're staying in shape and staying fit. And making friends and learning accountability and how to work with a team. And to get as far as they did, that's a thrilling season, right? And they'll be disappointed, but we'll make sure they know tomorrow how proud we are of them. Uh, boys tennis were the Berkshire League champs. Girls tennis won a sportsmanship award. That's very important. Baseball, same thing. Boys basketball were the CAC Division Five finalists. Many of you might have gone to that game up at Mohegan and watched it. And football, we had the CTC League Champions. I tried to curate some photographs, Ben, can you just toggle through at what you think is a reasonable rate? Just some shots of our various students and various uh, Okay, so we had a great year in athletics. Freezo, can you help me with the science technicalities? Can you come back up for a second? Because here's the thing, right? When I get to the science highlights, some of them are going to center on the planetarium and astronomy and SLU, and those are all things that you support and thank you, the board. But there are some photographs up here that are going to depict a new super, it is, this is never enforced. A new supernova. Now that blows my mind, no pun intended, because you, we already know, when we see these things, we're looking how many millions of years back in time, right? First of all. Depending upon how many light years away the event is. But the SLU platform, I guess, captured some photos of a new supernova, and I better let him unpack those. But this is the slide talking about some of science's highlights. And why don't you just, Freezo, why?
So yeah, so we did, we used the planetarium in, in two of our courses as a way to introduce our, our space science units. Uh, and then um, really important work here, the, in, in the whole year really, or at least two thirds of the year, we spent reviewing our chemical hygiene plan with our um, lab technician, as well as the whole science department, making sure that what we were saying was updated to our facilities and to our current practices and to the needs of our students, which is really, really all about safety and making sure that the safety practices that we committed to as a department and as a school, as a district really line up with best practice as well as, you know, the, the current needs of, of our, of our students and our program. Um, we also uh, did, did just finish this or in, yeah, just finished with this supernova hunting um, project. Which uh, how do I advance? Yeah. Okay, so uh, this was, I wanted to do original astronomy. I thought if I could really have our students, um, you know, it would, it's nice to show them data and have them analyze it, but if we could actually collect original data and perhaps on the, on looking for an, an, an original astronomy result, um, that would really capture the flavor of scientific discovery. And so we have this uh, SLU telescope. And I, I realized as I read about supernova hunting, that we had a tool that we could use to do that. So the, the practice is this, you take a picture of a galaxy. Um, and the reason we chose a galaxy rather than a star within our galaxy is that um, that there's so many stars. And there you have the greatest chance of happening to have one of them go supernova in any given week or month. Um, and so you, you pick a galaxy, um, take a picture of it and then a day later, you know, every day you take another picture of it, or, or a week later or a month later. And then you compare the two pictures to see, is there a dot in that one of those pictures that wasn't present in the other one? And then after you rule out other possibilities, then becomes the possibility that what you're looking at is a supernova. So we did not find one. I, I, I'll just take, take out the suspense here and say Physics Nine did not discover a supernova. But so the, the person I was consulting with at SLU um, wanted to show us what this looked, what, what one of these looked like. And so exactly one of the um, the uh, galaxies on our list, um, which actually one of our groups was considering taking a picture of the Triangulon Galaxy or the Pinwheel Galaxy. And they chose a different one, also another spiral galaxy similarly likely to have a supernova in it. And within the week, the weekend that we were taking our picture, there was a supernova in the Triangulon Galaxy. And the group that had thought about doing it was, was like, oh, so close. But in any event, I'll show you what this looks like. So um, go, can you go to the next picture, Ben? Uh, oh wait, hang a second. Okay. In the next picture, let's see what we got. Oh yeah, so we didn't get that. Two pictures, it would, would be two pictures of, and actually, if you look in the region review, uh, Ben, is that going to make the region review this time? Yeah, yeah. So the region review is going to have the pictures in it. Um, but, but the idea is that you look at a picture and then you look at the exact same picture exactly aligned with it. And you flip back and forth, it's called blink comparison, with the idea that you flip back and forth quickly and you look in different parts of the picture and you see this bright dot that isn't, is present in one of the pictures that isn't in the other. And it's, it's, it's a little harder when you're comparing the picture side by side. But if you, if you feel like engaging a little astronomy, region review, I don't know, page what, uh, you'll find it. Flip through there and you'll see, um, you'll see some pictures of the Pinwheel Galaxy. Thank you.
Holy cow, I mean, I, this one had two big dots and the other one didn't, so I thought I was picking the supernova frame. That's rather embarrassing.
And I know that there was a one group that did use this picture and another picture from five days later to do the blink comparison. No supernovas.
Okay, and our teachers and our students appreciate the board's support for SLU and for the planetarium and. They're taking these resources and making them fit into the world that's best for student critical thought and science. Again, seeing science as a way of thinking, not a body of facts. And the NJSS, as uh as you know, is all about having students identify a phenomenon and then try to investigate and explain it the way a scientist would. With experimentation and data and we're doing that, our students are doing that with astronomy right now. So thank you. Okay, for business tech and tech ed, um technology classes have quite a list of accomplishments here. They learned nine different software programs, built over 50 robots and automated machines. They wrote over a thousand lines of code in the middle grade. They engineered orthotic devices and occupational therapy games for patients with CP. High school computer science students built and programmed 15 different Edison robots. And um under Dr. Goslin's support and the board's support to refurbish our um TV, productive video production studio. We're starting to see um returns on that investment. The TV studio classes are creating. Spartan Scope, which is a news, uh a short news documentary program covering issues important to our school that we play in um. In our advisories. And in fact, some of those pieces have been nominated for Fox 61 News Awards as student for student um productions and. There's going to be a ceremony on June 7th up in Hartford and our students and our teacher and very well myself are are going to attend. And business classes participated in 20 different uh business simulations. Um I'm sorry for the repeat on the Edison robots. Investing students chosen defended over 50 mutual funds or exchange traded funds and they're available for a reasonable fee to be your financial advisor. And eight students received Yukon economics credit. And then last but not least, I think you know the big point of pride for world language this year. Is that with board's support um and with the teachers' planning and um and attention. Our students learned a lot about different cultures. And we know about the power of travel, right? It's not just, it's fun, but it also lets you see some viewpoints that might remain hidden and elusive, otherwise. By virtue of seeing how different cultures view the world and and express those beliefs and. All of our kids, you remember when they reported to you, said, wow, they saw a few things. In Costa Rica, cultural and otherwise, that helped them see the world maybe a little bit different and have a bit, maybe a bit of a wider perspective of some of the vistas that are out there in in the world. And there they are, uh down on their trip. Okay, so those are our highlights and our points of pride for this school year. Um uh we appreciate all the support we get from. Um central office and from our board. Um and we have a strong school with uh, I say it's a great place to teach and learn and work. We want to keep it that way. We want to move it forward. I do always say, as Mary Ann quoted, we don't have to be bad to get better. Um I inherited a very strong school and I want to work with teachers to build structures from the ground up that can gain traction over the long haul. To move us in an even stronger direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Shells. Um, well, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um the first, I, there are two sets of minutes on the, on there, the minutes of May 1 and May 22nd. Um, I don't know if anyone would like to take these off, but I would like to take off the May 1 minutes for some adjustments. And um those adjustments are under reports and recognition and it has to do with the session of the appellate court. Um, I think that this should be phrased a bit differently uh when we get to the last line. It says there were 11 court marshals and three judges in attendance in addition to the defense counsel um of um the parties. We have the word counsel spelled with a C I L and it should be S E L, C O U N S E L. It's in two locations, the bottom of the first, the bottom line of the first page. And under the second page, it's in the middle of the second line. Um in addition, I think that we should amend this to say um that um. When it talks about who's in attendance, it should make references to judges Elliot D. Prescott, Nina F. Elgo and Hope C. Sealy. Appellate Court clerks and judicial department staff members as well as 11 state marshals. I think it should say that because that way it's a little bit more descriptive and we know who was there, especially since we did. Um give these judges the benefit of having a land name. Like to have their names in there. So I would make, I would suggest those changes and with that change, I would move that we adopt the minutes as modified. Uh moved in second in the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining. It's unanimous. Those are modified. Um is there, would anyone like to take anything further off the consent agenda? Hearing none, uh the um two sets of the, the other set of minutes of May 22nd is adopted. Okay, we'll go on to reports and recognition. Well, it's lost my thing. Um. I would like to um. Recognize that uh we we've had a a number of elections uh in our, in our region over the course of the last few weeks. Uh and I would like to uh recognize that um uh board members Alex McNautin, Stephanie Kalnick, Justin Onley, Mary Weber and Joe Abdella have been returned to office for another term. Uh congratulations to you and uh. And then we we have a new member of the board, uh Victoria Salon, who's been elected for Bridgewater to replace Julie. And so I think we have another terrific board and I want to say congratulations to all of you and and welcome back. Uh you thought you were getting off early and you're not. Okay, um. Also, I'd like to um uh point out that um. We have uh coming up this this Saturday, June 10th at 10 a.m. is the Chappagh uh. High school commencement uh that will be back here at Chappagh for the first time in several years. So you can. Please, you have been sent, should have been sent tickets and if not, then you should still invite it to come. So please feel free to to attend that. And if you do come, we would uh like to see you on the stage. So please, please be up there if you if you decide to come. And again, it starts at 10 o'clock um here at Chappagh. Uh on June 13th um is the middle school promotion ceremony and that is at 6 p.m. here at Chappagh also. So those two ceremonies are coming up and we hope we have good weather for them. Um. And that was my report. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shuman. Um still a little bit of my thunder, uh but I am excited about graduation and looking forward to that as well as Aloha Day. Um at elementary's coming up. Um it's been a very fun time of the year. We've had lots of award nights um for scholarships, um for athletics. And so it's been great to um have an opportunity to celebrate our students. Um we had field days at our elementaries um and Nicole and I actually even got to cut up and serve watermelon. Um so that was kind of fun also. Um get out of the office and do something like that. Um and I'm just really excited for the end of the year. Uh it's always one of my favorite times of the school season because uh there's just so much fun and excitement in the air. And uh I'm looking forward to to our graduation and um. Again, congratulations to our building and grounds crew have done a great job trying to get the campus ready. Um, you know, they've been really out there working and laying mulch and cutting and trimming um so that we look um in top shape for for graduation. So thank you to all their efforts as well. Um we have, under the personnel tonight, we have the appointments of two folks who are very excited to bring uh into the district. First is Megan Davenport. Uh she'll be joining our agri-science uh program as a teacher. Um she brings wealth of experience um as an Ag student herself, um as a FFA um representative at the state national levels. Um and a graduate of Yukon, um who was a proud Husky and can't wait to come back and contribute to our program. And then Patrick Odell joining us as an ice hockey assistant coach um at Chappagh Valley School. And uh Patrick brings coaching experience and just a whole bunch of enthusiasm. Um that he can't wait to get out on the ice and train the team this evening. So welcome those folks aboard as well. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh John's not here, so I suppose we will have a treasurer's report uh before on to committee reports. Um if there's anything to be aggressive as treasurer, and maybe you can do that in your finance and operations, Alex. Uh okay, uh Mr. Onley, curriculum and educational program.
Sure, um nothing new. Our next meeting will be June 19th here at Chappagh. At 6:00.
Okay, uh. Sir Abdella, advance.
Uh I attended the uh June 1st virtual meeting uh for the advanced board of directors. Our board approved uh three action items for the Head Start program. We also approved uh the contract extension and evaluation for the executive director, Jeffrey Kitchens. He will be on for another three years. Uh there was also an announcement for the uh ribbon cutting at the advanced regional learning center, which is the former East. Uh former East School in Torrington. And they announced their career pathways. They will be announcing their career pathways and workforce development program. Uh the courses to be offered are manufacturing, engineering, early childhood education and healthcare. And at ribbon cuttings, June 15th. And we also uh elected the slate of officers and I was elected treasurer.
Congratulations. Okay, excellent. Um finance and operations.
Yeah, uh in John's absence, uh I will not uh go through every item that we went over budget on. Uh but uh. Uh but suffice it to say, we have a lot more that we went under budget on. And uh we're going to end the school year in a very good position. Uh. Uh there's been some transfers of funds between accounts, certain items, certain accounts. Needed a little more money, other accounts had excess. There were more excesses than needs and there's been some transferring of funds around. Um, one of the issues that we did talk about, and I think at some point we're going to have to think about it, is the tuition in. Uh the 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 dollar amounts that we're charging. Uh uh we are the best deal in town. Um and uh compared to what some other schools charge for tuition in, uh I think that uh we we could consider raising those numbers. Um finally, uh one of the things that I'm very happy about is that we've got that 2% to transfer into the 2% fund. Um and though I think will be a motion later on to deal with that. Um but uh the numbers look great. Uh uh and uh that's it.
Wonderful. And for one last time, the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee, Stuart.
I have nothing new to report this evening. Thank you.
Well, I I'll say it again, Julie, you have accomplished an amazing vow, leaving that committee of no. Okay, uh we have no old business. We have no new business and updates, but we have several action items. So we'll move on to section K. The first is to consider and if appropriate, approve the school property disposal list with permission for the director of finance to dispose, sell. Dispose of, sell or donate identified equipment that's appropriate. I think that list has been circulated. Uh does anyone have any questions? And if not, why don't we have a motion to uh to approve that? Moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Now questions? Or concerns? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? It's unanimous. Next item on action is to consider if appropriate, approve the field trip request for Chappagh Spartan ambassadors. To go to the Wyndham Tolland 4H camp in Conference Center, Connecticut on October 19th to 20th, 2023. This is grade seven and eight. Well, perhaps um uh Dr. Goslin can tell us a little bit about the Spartan and the Chappagh Spartan ambassadors.
So this is a new program um that was really um brought forward by Mike Croft and his mothers who really felt that. Um similar to to what Link Crew may do for the high school folks that. Uh it'd be wonderful to have Spartan ambassadors who are some of the eighth grade students. Um who help to bring new students into the school, um acclimate them to um the student body and and the operations of the school. Um and ensure that they feel success and that they're welcome and included when they join us. So um this is a new group. Um this is their first year. And this will be an opportunity for them to to go out and work on their leadership skills um during this field trip.
I think that's fantastic and I and I very much appreciate uh Dr. Shell's explanation of the of the link uh program. I think that's very important. I think it's critical because we really need to make sure people are welcome to feel a part of this in a school environment. And you know, it's one of those things that should be done, but gosh, we're all so busy, it's hard to do. So thank you for formalizing it. And I think it's great that we've done it at the middle school level as well. I think that's a big step forward for our for our district. We cannot forget about that. It's so important for people to belong. Okay, um the next item is to consider and if appro. Oh, I'm sorry, we forgot to vote on that. My my mistake. All those in, uh is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining? That's unanimous. Sorry about that. Um to consider and if appropriate, approve revision to the board meeting schedule for 2023, 2024. Um. Is there, we have, we've already approved this? That's right. That that's what we did right now. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, as a matter of fact, I'd point out to you that what we're going to do is the superintendent will make the presentation of the budget. On the 26th, meeting of the 26th of February. And then on March 4th, uh or March 11th, there'll be a district budget hearing. And then on March 18th, there'll be a Board of Education budget workshop. And on March 25th, that's when we will vote on the budget. So this should give adequate time to take into consideration public. Issues, public concerns and give us a chance to to run them to ground, to work on them, to make sure that we've got an adequate response and we haven't just uh. You know, we haven't failed to have a good understanding.
Is the budget workshop a public meeting?
They're all public meetings, yeah. The budget workshop is a public meeting, but the ideal would be you'll sit and discuss what has, what has come up.
There'll be public comment at that time too. We may have.
There may be public comment at that time, but I, you you hope that most of the public comment comes to the district budget hearing. Because it it's really important when we do the budget workshop to take what happened at the district budget hearing and have the superintendent and staff. Go through and say, well, gee, you know, we hadn't considered that or we have considered or there's this issue. And and that way we get a good presentation. So when we make a decision, it's based on all the, all the dat, the data that we do are so assiduously collecting constantly. So yeah, I think that's the idea, but I I'm sure if there's public comment at the at the budget workshop, that's fine. But I think that's primarily intended to be an opportunity for us to woodshed that document. So I think this gives us a better approach to the budget. It starts the process a little bit earlier. And that way we still get the budget out in time, but we do it in a more informed and and transparent manner. Well, that was the idea that was in the time. So are there other questions about the schedule? All right, do I have a motion to approve this? There a second? All right, all those in favor of approving this revised Board of Education schedule for meetings of 2023 to 2024, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining? It's unanimously adopted. All right, we'll move on to the last uh action item to consider and if appropriate, approve the transfer of $496,254 to the 2% non-recurring capital reserve fund. Is there a motion to approve that? Is there a second?
Second.
This is the advantage of 2%. We're now putting nearly half a million dollars into that fund. And this should once again uh keep our credit rating uh favorable. Uh because we're setting aside sufficient money to deal with things that come up. And believe me, there will be things that will come up. Um as our, as our 52-year-old swimming pool presents us with challenges all the time. So who knows? But but now we're really being able to put away a reasonable amount of money so we can make this less budget intensive on these decisions. So. I think this is great. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining? That is unanimously adopted. Um now we'd like to have a motion to go into executive session. Uh for personnel matters and I would like to invite the superintendent and uh Ms. Brandt as well. So motion? Second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, stating it's unanimous. We're in executive session.